Okay.
I mean, it's a nice design, but it's taken away a lot of the market. And it's times to see a market.
Oh, that was from many cross.
I have my draft in here.
That's actually believe not there.
I just want to let everybody know we are live on YouTube at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. We'll start in one minute.
Have you heard anything from Mark?
Yeah, he said he was at an appointment and he's down trying to maybe. We get calling.
Where did Tom green? Yo.
Oh, no, it's fine. If your button is lighted up.
Right here, see the button right here? Okay, we're going to go ahead and start this city study session for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We'll start with old business, which there isn't any. The next is new business and it's going to be a presentation from YV cog or health.
Or a housing grant.
For housing grants.
Hello, how are you? How are you?
How are you tonight, Chris?
I'm good. How are you guys?
I am doing fantastic.
Good.
Go ahead and give us your spiel, so.
I would love to. So, thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. And I'm really excited about what Jeff is going to share with you guys. Last year, YV cog was awarded a grant to develop a pilot program to be able to involve your community in planning with a focus on creating a healthier community through our planning efforts. Our angle is to be able to bring more money to build newer homes, parks, or whatever your constituents tell us their needs are. And YV cog chose Mapton and Tappanish to pilot. I'm going to turn this over to Jeff to give you a really high clip of what we're going to do and what we're hoping to accomplish in the first phase of three phases. So this is just the first part. Jeff is our senior planner at cog and he's also the lead on this project. So let me share my screen.
Well, thank you, Chris, Mayor Merritt, distinguished members of the council. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. As Chris mentioned, we received the first part of what is looking like it's going to be a three-part grant over the course of next three years. And what we're intending to do is, is to make this connection between the location and quality of your housing and the quality of your health. And in so doing, we're hoping to be able to come up with some plans and some strategies and hopefully maybe even some changes to your comp plan and your development code that can help accelerate this process and lead to a better quality of housing and better health for your constituents. The grant is from the Kreske Foundation. Mr. Kreske was of Kmart fame. And he kind of pioneered the whole notion of the five and dime store back in the teens and the twenties of the twentieth century. He initiated the program in 1924 with a $1.6 million startup. These days, they're giving around $130 million annually to various programs and involve arts and culture, education, environment, human services, and of course, our subject, health. We received the grant in 2019 for $100,000 initially. I got, I came on board with cog in August and that, of course, is about the time that COVID was at its peak or approaching its peak and it kind of put a different spin on the whole program for us. So we've, we've kind of backed off on a couple of ideas and accelerated on a couple of more ideas, but hopefully, we're going to be have some, some pretty good product for you here in the, in the next couple of years. And as Chris mentioned, we've decided to focus on two communities, you all in, in the city of Tappanish. And we're going to be able to apply the same processes and, and analysis to the two communities, but we're expecting to find very different results. Can we go to slide two, Chris? So what we're finding now, geographers, demographers, sociologists and public health experts are kind of getting together and realizing this, this profound effect that where and what we live in has an immense effect on the quality of our health. Whether it's the age of our, of our home or the location of our home or what our home is made out of or what our home is located next to, or how far it is that we have to travel to get the things that we need that impact our health, these connections between our, our home and our proximity and, and the quality of our home is, is, is starting. Experts are starting to realize that it really does have a huge impact on the quality of our health. So what we're going to be doing and have actually started doing is getting a better understanding of the housing stocks in Mapton as well as Tappanish and the proximity or, or the nearness of the things that are vital services. We're predominantly doing this with, with a GIS geographic information systems and we're utilizing data from the county. Their, their parcel data set has an immense amount of information about the age, the size, the makeup, the quality and, and the, the the condition of the housing stock in, in these communities, all communities in the county. And we're able to take that information, process it, and then we'll be able to do some proximity analysis. It will give us a better sense of how far it is to the doctor, how far it is to the bus stop, how far it is to, to fresh food, how far is it to parks, how far is it to jobs? All of these things we can, we can kind of put into a complex algorithm and actually come up with a scorecard for homes, neighborhoods and communities so that we have a better picture of what exactly the conditions are on the ground. The other element of what we're looking at and what we're hoping to get your, your, your blessings on is, is we're going to be reaching out to the community and getting a sense of their, what's their reality, what's their perceptions, what's, what, what are they seeing are the strengths and weaknesses of, of their housing, their neighborhoods and their communities? And then we can take that information and kind of factor it in to the information that we have about the existing condition and, and create an algorithm of our own to get a sense based on what's important to the community. And then we can get a sense of, of where we stand, both in reality and in perception, so that we can start developing some initiatives and some prototypes and some recommendations for how to make more and better and smarter housing for your community. That's kind of what we're doing in a nutshell. It's, it's, it's kind of complex and kind of simple. We've, we've been doing some windshield analysis. We've been out in the community. And, and we've been crunching the data and, and looking into the maps and the geography and, and whatnot to get our baseline information. We're hoping to get our surveys out in the next week or two. We've already been getting conducting services or surveys in Tappanish. We're getting some very positive results from them and some very interesting results from them. So we're asking for your blessings and, and your permission to move forward with this and start conducting our surveys and see what we come up with. Over the next two years, we'll be continuing to crunch the data, continuing hopefully to get more involved in the community on a face-to-face basis rather than having to do it over the computer with, with surveys and really come up with some, some hard and fast usable information and, and recommendations on what you can do to make your neighborhoods, your housing and your community better and more affordable. With that, I'll open it up for questions or thoughts or.
Thank you, Jeff. Add a little bit more to this. So we'd like to start the surveys as soon as possible, but of course, we would like your permission because we would like this to actually come from or have it appear like you are, it's coming from you and that we're partnering with this because of course, your community trusts you and they don't have a clue who YV cog is. But we, our surveys are in English and in Spanish. We're offering incentives for those who are willing to participate in the survey. We'll be planning drawing and someone from the drawing will win a $200 gift certificate to spend at a local business in Mapton. And four winners will receive a $50 gift certificate to spend at businesses in Mapton. And then the other part that's really great is I've been talking with Department of Commerce and working with Karen regarding affordable housing and/or other types of grants that can that relate to this survey that we are actually starting. And so my hope is that you will say, yes, let's get going on this and see what we can do to improve our planning, the health of people and really make Mapton shine as a place where businesses would like to move into and be able to keep your people living in Mapton and others moving in. So I don't know, Mayor or council people, if you have any questions, but we would love to be able to get started on this.
Thank you very much, both of you. There is just a couple of questions. So first question, this money is, that's available, would it be available, it's available to anyone that owns a home in Mapton? Is it to like somebody that has a pre-existing house need to update that house? This is what this money is for? Or if somebody wants to buy a new house, build a new house, this is what this money is for as well as businesses? Am I correct?
So there's three different grants, Mayor. The first one is all of the gathering of data. So that is strictly planning. The second grant from Kreske is going to be bringing all of the stakeholders together, the people who live in Mapton, your medical facility, your schools, law enforcement, any, anybody who's actually a stakeholder and can really look at what are your neighborhoods? What would make them safer, more healthy, relieve stress from people, you know, all of those different factors that contribute to someone's health? And so that is where the money starts to be leveraged with other grants such as the home program that Yakima County has where they will come in and rehab a home. So for instance, when we pulled your data, Jeff did a really quick little map for us the other day of the housing stock in Mapton and quite a few of the homes were built years ago. Well, that is a red flag for us that there may be lead paint in those homes. So what could we do to get rid of the lead paint and help those people live in a safer home? Or if their roof is leaking, I mean, there's all kinds, but we need to hear from your community first what they think their needs are.
Is this project only for homeowners or rentals?
It, it is actually for the city of Mapton. And so it would not matter if they're a business, a rental, a homeowner. It really is looking at, at the entire city and looking at what would make that a healthier place to live. So if you don't have, oh, I know you guys have been working so hard on your parks and they're beautiful, but if you did not have a park, that might be something that your community would say, you need a park, you need a place for kids to play that's safe, that's fenced in, that has sidewalks around it, you know, whatever it is that your community says are the needs, that is the type of funding that we are going to go after to be able to leverage the grant that we received from the foundation. I'm sorry, I could not hear you.
Does that help the homes that are already condemned to get reopened?
She, she's asking if there's a condemned home. Would this grant money be able to be used to reestablish that house as a living dwell, a living dwelling?
You know, that would, it, what it would depend on is if your people came back and said, there are not enough homes in Mapton and we have some that are boarded up. We would then work with the Home Consortium at Yakima County to be able to see if they would be willing to come in and redo those homes.
Do you guys have any other questions? Think of anything you want to ask.
Why you fancy for the park?
So, so let's say we, I mean, you brought up the park and you know, we're working really hard.
I do. It's beautiful. Yeah.
So could this, part of this funding help, like we have a park, but we have nothing in it? Would this help with putting stuff in it?
If that is what your community says, I think one of the beautiful things about this specific grant is that we don't come in and say, this is what Mapton needs. We wait for your community members to tell us what their needs are. So it's almost kind of a backward approach. But we truly are waiting for, which is why we're doing the survey and interviews. We're waiting for the people who live in the community to tell us this is what would make it a better place to live. Maybe we need crosswalks by all of the schools. Maybe we need fencing around the park. So we're just waiting for them to tell us.
And is this? This is. It's free to the city of Maptonite. It costs us nothing for you to come in and do this.
No, costs you nothing. And we are hoping to, over the next couple of years, to be able to bring more money in to be able to accomplish whatever it is we learn from these surveys.
Who determines who has the last say of what's going to be done in the community after you've asked and done your survey?
So first we will survey and then we will reach out to different stakeholders in your community, as I shared. Definitely it would be, we would ask somebody from your council to be on this committee also. And then we look at all the information together and we go through that process of, you know, this, this is a really frequent need that people shared a lot. Maybe we only had one or two people say, this is an issue. And so we kind of just go through a breakdown and determining what is it that your community is saying? And maybe there's three or four different things. It may be, oh gosh, we need to bring in some type of community center for our teens or kids to hang out in rather than on the streets. So what would that look like? And is that truly what the majority of the people would want? And then we can go out and find funding for that type of building. But it all comes back to people's health where they live. And it's not just the physical health, but the mental health of stress, you know, do you have enough childcare? Do you have, do people feel comfortable letting their kids go out and play and ride bikes on the street? Or are your roads, the speed limit too high to let kids go out and play in the streets? So it really is going to depend on what your people tell us. And then we form a committee of your community members and we listen to you and we do what it is you want to do in your community.
And Chris, just to clarify, so what you guys are wanting to do right now is simply use the grant money that you have been given to survey our residents. At this time, there isn't actually any further grants to do any community improvement. Right now, the grant that we have is just to find information.
Correct. This first grant is nothing more than gathering information. And we've, we already know that we will get the second and the third grant because they all go together with these. So yes, this first one and it, and when we get this information, of course, we're going to share because the more communication we have, the better.
So do you need the council to make a motion or do we need to do a resolution or just kind of an understanding that we're on the same page and we want that? Is that enough for you guys?
Yeah, it, it really is. Whatever your procedures and policies are, so if you just say, yeah, let's survey our community, then we will get started. And then I, I asked, so something we learned when we started this with Tappanish is that the staff did not know that we were doing this. The council did. The school district knew, but the staff did not. So when all of a sudden their community members were receiving the survey card in the mail and calling City Hall and they were going, I don't know what you're even talking about. So we'll need to make sure and make sure that your staff knows there, there is a survey going around. It is not a scam. We are not looking for any money.
So do you have a little, you have some type of card that's already asked all the questions for them to fill out?
We do. They actually can just use their phone and scan the little code on it and it takes them into the survey. It's a really, really short and sweet survey. And then our last question is, would you be willing to give more detail if we were to contact you again? And that's when people can stay involved with this whole process or they can, you know, say, no, I don't want to be a part of it anymore. Just here's my answers for the survey.
Okay, it's all totally anonymous. It's, it's fairly high level, general questions for, for starters. And then like Chris says, at the end, we, we asked them if perhaps we could contact them for some additional information. So like we, our responses have been very good coming out of Tappanish. And we're, we're, we're looking for some endorsement, some permission and, and some, some sanction and maybe spreading the word. I was, I was down there a couple, three weeks ago, just kind of doing some windshield surveys and taking some pictures. And, and a woman followed me down, tracked me down and wanted to know what the heck I was doing, taking pictures of her house. So trying to get some community awareness and participation in there. I, I gave her my card and explained it to her and, and you know, it was fine, but she was initially a little concerned that there was this guy driving around taking pictures of her house. So anything that you can do to, to raise some awareness and some community participation would be much appreciated.
Is this something we could just stuff in the water bills? Is where doing water bills this month? If they can get it to us in time? So you guys will actually do the mail out?
Yep.
To everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got three, about five postcards that will mail to everybody in the town. And then we have some small business cards that we can put in coffee shops, countertops, any, anywhere that, you know, folks might be able to pick them up and take a look and.
Sounds good. And so we all just need to spread the word and if anybody is watching out there, you know, I encourage you that when you get this, fill it out because it's only going to help you as a city. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much, Jeff and Chris from YV cog.
Yeah.
So we need to. We're good with it like that on the record? Okay. Okay. So the next thing we're going to discuss is discussion of resolution 202015, adopting the public participation plan for the city of Mapton Shoreline Master Program update. Again, this is through YV cog is helping us because they come and done their presentation to the planning commission last week during their meeting. So now they're here wanting to talk to us about it as well.
Hello, Chris.
You want me to run with that ball, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. This is one of my other projects as, as part of my duties with YV cog. The shoreline master program, the state, well, let me back up. The shoreline master program came to fruition back in the early seventies during the initial environmental movements and concerns about water quality, air quality, et cetera. And the state passed the shoreline management act, which basically designate what streams in a sense belong to the state and become shorelines of the state, streams and lakes. So any stream that's over 20 cubic feet per second in the volume of flow or any lake that's 20 acres or greater, the state basically assumes possession of and mandates that they be protected and be given access to as much as possible for the people of the entire state of Washington. And of course, in their infinite wisdom, they tend to want to emphasize local control. So they pass that, the administration of this new law on to the counties and cities that, that live within and, and around these designated shorelines of the state. The way they go about mapping and picking and, and delineating the areas that require protection is kind of complicated and it's a little strange at times. But back in 2007, what the folks of the Yakima region did was that the county developed this plan, this program to protect the streams and rivers of the shorelines of the state. And then most of the various communities in the Yakima County adopted the plan that Yakima County came up with. So Yakima County did all the work and they did all the structure for the permitting process and the mapping of what's to be protected and where and how and all of these things. And they did it in accordance with state law. And then it was very easy for Union Gap and Mapton and Granger and Zilla to just adopt the plan that the county came up with. And then the state says, you got to come back about every eight years and make sure everything's still kosher. Make sure everything's still conforming to any changes that your community may have made or the state may have made because this is your community plan theoretically. And if the state makes changes to state law, we got to make sure those two still are congruent with each other. So they've required all the cities and the county of Yakima to go through and review their existing shoreline master program to make sure any changes that the community did or the state did, didn't muck the waters up or cause some conflicts somehow. So this is kind of peculiar to Yakima County because you've got this regional plan. We've developed a professional services agreement and, and are handling eight jurisdictions, YV cog is, and assisting with this update. The state has provided a, a, a grant from the Department of Ecology to help pay for all of that. And so we've developed the plan. We've got the money and we're working on this process to review this regional plan to make sure it conforms to all your local and all the state laws that have, that have come through in the last eight, 10 years since you adopted the plan. The problem comes in is that ecology wants the county, well, the county wants to do something different. the county, well, the county wants to do something different and ecology wants the communities to do something different. So we're working very hard to try and patch all of this together and make it all work so that everybody comes into conformance with state law. Um, but what we're needing to do is more tailor the program to your community and get it away from the county's regional um, um, coverage so that they have their plan and you have your plan. It's it's all kind of messy. We're making it work. Uh, this initial thing that we're bringing for you in front of you today is the the public participa- play, the Public Participation Plan. Uh, that's another piece of the puzzle that it's kind of like with comp plan updates. There's an element in the law that requires you have a plan to tell the people what you're doing and give them an opportunity to contribute and to comment and be part of the process. So this is a process oriented step along the way. So we're hoping that you will adopt the plan that we've come up with with a resolution. We will ship that off to the state to tell them we're conforming to that element of the overall program in the Public Participation Plan. One of the things that is unique to Mapton, and this is one of the the incongruities of state and local law, but as it as it turns out, the reality is you don't have any shorelines within your jurisdiction. There are no areas within the city of Mapton that require the protection. But because the state law says you were participate, you have to participate. So it's kind of a rhetorical process. It's a rhetorical exercise. The reality is there will be no impacts to the city of Mapton. We'll come up with this plan, we'll hand it to the state, the state will put their stamp of approval on it and we'll all walk away happy in June. But um, the reality is there's no tangible effect on the city of Mapton with regard to this whole process. Um, it's 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 hard to explain why it is this way, but the only way we can change it is to change state law. And that, of course, will require an act of Congress. So in consulting with ecology, the best thing for us to do is to craft this plan up, to craft this program up, to get it adopted and just move on in life until at some point in the distant future, the state reexamines the law and realizes that you don't have any shorelines. I hope that doesn't complicate things further. But again, tonight, we were just asking for your blessings on the Public Participation Plan and the adoption of that resolution that we have provided. Um, and that will will satisfy the element of the process and we will continue forward with the recrafting of the plan and and getting that in front of you and and having an open house for the community to comment. Um, and we will hopefully get this adopted, uh, June 30th is when it has to be adopted by. And I hope I didn't make that a terrible mess for you.
Thank you very much.
I'm open to take some questions. It's 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 one of those things.
Do you have any questions on it? I studied up on it when I, when I first got the paperwork for shoreline. It's like shoreline and then after halfway through, I realized it doesn't even pertain to, it's just a legal thing we have to take care of. So.
Well, within the RCW, it clearly spells out all of the jurisdictions within Yakima County that must participate in this plan. And for some reason, back in 1972 or whenever it was they crafted the RCW, they decided that Mapton was needed to be on the list and nobody seems to be able to answer as to why that is because you know, you're you're like 500 feet from the Yakima River. Um, you're outside of the flood plain, you're outside of all of these things that normally bring a jurisdiction into the process, but somebody back then decided you should be on the list and because now you're on the list within the state law, you have to play along. It's, yeah, it's weird.
Does anybody have any questions, you guys? Are you good with passing this? All right. Thank you very much, Jeff and Chris. So we'll go ahead and move on.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah.
There, there is a resolution with that. Did you realize that?
Yeah, we'll load that into the council meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to see discussion of ordinance 2021 dash 1169, the water revenue bond in the amount of $677,000. It's on page 2251.
And this is um, just sort of another thing we have to do because of our WELL 7 project and our USDA funding. So um, USDA requires us to issue a bond to cover the loan that we're required to get with them. Um, the likelihood that we will even start using USDA funds on WELL 7 in 2021, I think is low. I think we're only gonna be using um, CDBG funds this year. But we do have to get the bond passed so that we can start drawing on those funds um, when we get to the point where we need to.
We've went through the WELL 7 project quite a few times, but do you guys have any questions on this bond right here? That's something that we need to talk to Jamin about, but I mean, they're starting the, we're just now getting the money. So first they have to do like where they can drill the well and all the that type of stuff. So the well probably won't start being drilled in 2020, probably 2021 by the time they get or 22, I mean, by the time they get everything taken care of.
And Jamin is um, in attendance right now. So if you did want to ask him some questions, I can bring him on. So if you guys would like me to bring him on, I can do that.
Do you guys have any questions for Jamin? No, that's okay, Jameson.
Okay.
Are you all good with this bond? Okay, so with that, with that being said, we'll go ahead and adjourn the study session at 6:37.